Support comes from the Missouri Forest Products Association, saluting Earth Day on April 22nd with an ongoing commitment to help offset carbon emissions with sustainable harvesting of Missouri forests. Details at choosewood.com.
From St. Louis Public Radio. This is St. Louis on the air.
The ballot language is written out on there, the full policy?
I also encourage people to go check it out.
I would say the LGBT community was considered and tied in at the very beginning of this piece of legislation.
Out of any city in the United States, we probably have more people that are qualified to do mapping and use GIS software due to the National Geospatial Agency here.
I mean, it seems that the disagreements are fairly minor. And if overall, this is a reform package, why not vote for it, pass on it? And if there are some things that need adjustment, that can be done later.
I don't think there is a fundamental disagreement. I very much think that we could go back, bring this back to, you know, bring this to the public.
I would agree with what Mr. Varrall said, which is that we have time, at least with the redistricting portion, to get it right, and I'm confident that St. Louis can do it.
I'm Sarah Fenske. This coming Tuesday, St. Louis City voters are being asked to weigh in on Proposition R. Prop R's mailer promises that R is for reform, but not everybody is convinced it will clean up the real problems at City Hall. We've invited two guests to join our discussion today and make their best case for and against Prop R. And so here on the pro side is Jamie Cox. She's the Policy Chair for Reform St. Louis, which helped get this on the ballot. Jamie Cox, welcome.
Thanks, Sarah, for having me. Good to be here.
And on the con side today is Heather Navarro. She represented the 28th Ward as an older woman until just a few months ago. That's when she resigned that position to take a new job at a nonprofit. So Heather Navarro, welcome.
Thank you so much for having me today.
So Jamie, give us some context. Who is this group behind Prop R? And what brought you guys together to work on this issue?
Yeah, absolutely. So Reform St. Louis is the coalition behind Proposition R. And we really created this coalition because we wanted to increase ethics and transparency at the Board of Alderpersons. And that's the spirit that is behind the proposition we're proposing before everyone today.
So those sound like goals everybody could agree on. How are you going about getting there? What are the major components of this, this proposition?
Absolutely. So there's actually three main components of Proposition R. The first is that we want to prohibit alderpersons from taking official actions on which they have a personal or financial conflict of interest. And this really just means that we don't want alderpersons voting on policy issues because they have a vested interest in it. We want them to be voting on what's the best interest for the voters. And the second component of our policy is that we want to create an independent citizens' redistricting commission. And for us, this is really one of the main, major conflicts of interest alderpersons have because they're able to draw their own ward lines after the redistricting process every 10 years. And finally, we want to make sure that if citizens propose anything to the Board of Alderpersons related to municipal elections, that the alderperson shouldn't be able to take that away without bringing that choice back to the public vote.
Okay. So those are three big provisions there. We're going to dig into each of those. But before we start getting into the nitty gritty of them, Heather, I understand at the point when this group was getting going and drafting this stuff, you actually talked to them at some point? Like, you guys sat down and you had some discussions?
Yes. Yeah, I was very excited to be part of the conversations because I agree very much with these principles of ethics, transparency, accountability, eliminating conflicts of interest, all of that. I mean, I can get on board with that 100%. I think what, I think what a lot of us thought about in terms of what an independent process would look like, how we would get there, I think that has just taken shape a little bit differently. And some of the things that are, that are in here in terms of, you know, conflicts at the Board of Aldermen, it's already against state law and, and city ordinance to take any action that would benefit you personally. So, you know, in the municipal elections, I think there's a lot there that is still ripe for debate about what we passed with Prop D and approval voting. And so I, I'm very much in favor of all of these values and principles. It really just comes down to whether or not this proposition is going to achieve what we hope that it does.
Okay. So let's talk in a little more depth about the specific parts of this. I want to talk about the redistricting plans here because it feels like this was one of the things that was kind of front and center when this was first being discussed, was this would be a way to help us draw wards better in the city than the existing process on the books. How would this work if this is approved by voters?
Absolutely. So the main tenet of this is that we want to put the decision-making process in the hands of the voters. And that's how the Independent Citizens Commission is going to function. There's going to be a nine-member commission that is made up of individuals that are part of our constituency base in the city of St. Louis. And after the decennial census, which happens every 10 years, this coalition will come together, picked by first, an oversight committee, and then by a random drawing to help draw that process. And the most important tenet about the Independent Citizen Redistricting Commission is that there's going to be a requirement that they bring the map drawing process in front of the citizen base of St. Louis with community-based feedback portions, which we just saw within the 2020 census drawing that we had, was something that the city of St. Louis really wanted. People were asking, they wanted community feedback, they wanted public hearings. This is going to be a required portion of the process of this policy that I think will be really, really important for St. Louis City voters.
That the actual drawing happens in public meetings as opposed to sort of people huddling behind closed doors?
Yes. So not in public meetings necessarily, but the commission will be making the decision process, but that will be a public process in which people could have community input on what's happening.
And so before I ask Heather for her thoughts on this, I just want to make sure I'm clarifying something because I've heard a lot of people asking me about this, and I want to make sure we're giving them the right answer. The first time this process would be in place would be in 2030 if this goes through. Is that right?
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that point. Our coalition is not pushing to go backwards. We're wanting to change the way things are happening going forward.
Okay. So this process that we just went through, this is going to stand for 10 years regardless of what happens here with Prop R.
Absolutely.
So Jamie described how this would change the process. Do you think that's a fair summary of how this would work?
I think it is. I think, though, that we really need to get down into the nuances of, you know, if you've got a nine-member commission, my concern is that there's nothing in here that brings in the technical, the independent technical expertise of mapmaking. There, there's so many conflicts that anybody who's worked on maps before, worked for the city before, who might have expertise in this, recent expertise in this, is conflicted out. So I really have concerns about how we make sure that we have a nine-member commission who has the skills to be able to do this. Absolutely, citizens need to be involved and engaged. And I'm very much in favor of, of moving this away from the Board of Aldermen and putting in the hands of an independent body. But there's nothing in here that requires an independent demographer. There's nothing in here that requires GIS software, any of those sorts of things. And when you get down to it, you know, seating nine members in a random process, it could take many months. We, hopefully, we learned something from the Board of Electors, Board of Freeholders process. That was also in the charter, and it didn't have nearly as many steps as this. They never were seated, they never met. And so I just, I have real concerns that there's a tight timeline between when we get the census data and when we have to have a map. And what citizens want is a government that's responsive to them, a government that works. And I want us to move forward with a better process than what we have now. And I don't think this gets us there.
Sounds like you're saying your, your chief concern is that this would almost be impractical? Is that a fair summary?
I think so. And I think there are also concerns about what does it mean to be independent? Aldermen can still strike people from this list. The, the two people with expertise both come from, from appointed departments in, by the, by the mayor. So that, you know, there's the, there's a person from the Planning and Development Agency, and there's somebody from the City Councilor's office. Those are both politically appointed positions. The comptroller appoints someone to, to this commission. So there's still a lot of opportunity here for there to be a lot of, you know, political workings in this. I, I really think just a straight-up, an independent demographer that is accountable to a citizen commission would be a great way to go. And, and this veers off from that quite a bit.
Is that something, Jamie, that the group discussed? The idea of bringing in that independent demographer? I feel like that was something when the state was looking at redistricting, that was a big part of its plan.
Yes, absolutely. But before I address that, I do want to address some of the concerns that Ms. Navarro raised. And the first one being is that this commission will have a lot of expertise and access to resources. One of the important tenants of this policy is that we're equipping them with the necessary tools to draw maps, including the GIS software that Ms. Navarro raised, and also having access to feedback from the Planning Department and other expertise boards, just like the current Board of Alderpersons has when they're drawing their map process. So we're not going to take any of that technical expertise away. The other thing, especially about making sure that the commission actually comes together, the kickoff process of this does start with the Board of Alderpersons and making sure the Oversight Committee is selected. So that process is going to be still partially in the hands of the Board of Alderpersons to make sure that our city is following the processes that are necessary. So I wanted to address those concerns. And in terms of calling together an independent demographer, this is something that was raised with the state process. However, this is no longer the best practice. Actually, our policy was written with influence from the Brennan Center of Justice, which sets a lot of guidelines on best practices for redistricting. And that's the guidance that we're following with this policy and making sure that the independent commission, which is the new standard, is what St. Louis is putting in place.
Heather, I'd love to hear your, your response on that. And something that you also mentioned that I find myself sort of mulling in the back of my head, you said a lot of people who might have skill or, or interest in this area would be conflicted out. When the city's putting together this nine-member independent commission, who would not be allowed to serve on it?
Well, obviously, anybody who's going to run for office in these new districts, right? You know, you don't want them sitting on this and influencing the process. But, but anybody who, you know, has worked for government, has had a contract with government, anybody who's worked on a campaign recently, you know, anybody who's run for office, and I, and, you know, there's different timelines here. But we are in a shrinking city, and the number of people who have expertise in this sort of, in this area is, is really small. And so I think, you know, somebody might have had a contract with the government in the last year to do mapping. Well, they would be, you know, conflicted out from being able to participate in this commission. And, and while there may be resources available for this commission, there's nothing in here that requires them to use those. And, and last year, the Board of Aldermen, I mean, just even getting the software, figuring out who had access to it, who was paying for it, I mean, that, that all will become a negotiating point in here. In the, in the few months we have to draw a map, somebody's going to have to go to somebody in the government, whether it's the mayor's office or the president of the Board, and negotiate a budget to get these things. And they're not required in, in here. So I, I think there's just a lot we, we are assuming is going to happen, and our experience tells us that, you know, we need to think through this. And we have, we have 10 years to get this right.
Yeah. Jamie, I'd love to hear just any sort of final thoughts on, on this particular piece of this much larger Prop R that we're going to be coming back to. But before we take our break, anything more about that nine-member body and some of the concerns that Heather's just raised?
Yeah, absolutely. I would only just add that I think, you know, even, I, I would disagree with the comment that we are a shrinking city because I think we do have a lot of talent in the city of St. Louis. We have a lot of passionate individuals that I believe would definitely want to raise their hands and become a part of this process. And you called out the key components of timing. Anyone with a conflict of interest would just have to recognize that that timing is going to be a factor in whether or not they're going to be able to serve on this commission, and they would need to take that into account. But I think I would agree with what Mr. Varrall said, which is that we have time, at least with the redistricting portion, to get it right, and I'm confident that St. Louis can do it.
We are talking today to Jamie Cox, who's the Policy Chair with Reform St. Louis that helped get Prop R on the ballot. We're also joined by Heather Navarro. She's the former Democratic Alderwoman who represented the 28th Ward there in the city. We're going to take a quick break, but we'll be back shortly to continue this conversation with both Heather and Jamie. This is St. Louis on the air on St. Louis Public Radio.
Support comes from the Missouri Forest Products Association, saluting Earth Day on April 22nd with an ongoing commitment to help offset carbon emissions with sustainable harvesting of Missouri forests.
And now back to today's conversation. We're talking about Proposition R. This is on city ballots this coming Tuesday. I feel like a whole lot of city voters, self-included, need to get their heads around this thing in the next couple of days so we know the right thing to do at the ballot box. And so it's fortunate, we have two experts here today. Jamie Cox is the Policy Chair with Reform St. Louis that put this on the ballot. And Heather Navarro is a former alderwoman. Up until recently, she represented the 28th Ward and does have some concerns about this. And if you have questions for either of our guests, our phone lines are open, 314-382-8255. Again, that's 382-talk. You can also send us a tweet. We're at STL on air. So we talked quite a bit about how this redistricting commission would work, the nine independent citizens that Reform St. Louis would put up there, how they get chosen. There's two other big components of this. Jamie, this prohibits aldermen from taking an action where they have a conflict of interest. How would this be enforced?
Yes, exactly. So the first thing with this policy is that we're prohibiting alderpersons from taking official actions where they have a personal or financial conflict of interest. And I want to highlight that component because I think it's really important that there are processes for the alderpersons to disclose their financial, disclose their financial conflicts of interest, but those aren't made to be publicly available. And that's a key component of our policy. We want to make sure that the public knows if an alderperson has a conflict by requiring the disclosure statements to be posted on the city website. And that's one of the ways we'll make sure that the citizens are able to hold the leaders accountable in that way.
So there's that accountability provision that we would become aware of. Okay, hey, somebody just voted on this, they have also disclosed this. Right now, we don't have the ability to know that.
Absolutely.
So Heather, that sounds like, at least as a journalist, I'm thinking, wow, that sounds really useful and nice to have.
Yes, absolutely. And we, we do have it. I mean, personally, I mean, getting it up on the website, making it more easy to access, absolutely, we can, we can do that. I don't think we need to amend the charter. But our personal financial disclosures are available upon request. You don't have to file a Sunshine Act request to, to get those. And it is against state law and city ordinance to take an action that would personally benefit you, financially benefit you. So those are on the books. So, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that. I think there are other issues here in terms of, you also have to disclose any contracts you have. And one of my big concerns here is that we really need to be able to recruit the political leadership we need down at the Board, and we need to give them the support that they need. And there are two major issues here. One, you have to disclose any contracts you have. Right now, this is a $35,000 a year job. And if you, you probably have to have something else. If you're a lawyer or an accountant, you have contracts with clients, and you would have to disclose those now. And you would have to tell all of your clients that their names are going to go on a list that is published down at the Board of Aldermen. So that makes it really hard for those folks to run for this office. It also creates a big conflict with the attorney down at the Board who prosecutes these ethics complaints. So Aldermen are supposed to be able to go to this attorney for independent ethics advice, and now that person is now the one who's going to prosecute them. And that person's hired by the Board. So there's a huge conflict here that makes it really difficult to be an attorney down at the Board and to be an alderman relying on good legal advice.
So Jamie, that seems like a problem for that guy who's supposed to be advising the Board, but then might also have to prosecute the Board, just in terms of how, you know, the ethical rules of lawyers. It seems like that wades into a potential problem there. What, what's the thinking on having that one person have those two hats?
Well, I, I agree that this could be a circumstance, but I also want to highlight the component of the policy that we're talking about, which is that the conflict arises when that, the conflict arises when that issue is, has business before the Board of Alderpersons. And so I think that's the key thing that we have to highlight here. If an individual has a labor contract that would detract from their ability to carry out their public duty, then that's a conflict of interest. But carrying out your public duty does have nuances and issues that we do have to highlight here. But what Ms. Varrall raised, which is the point of having qualified city leaders in our Board of Alderpersons, that's what we want. We want people that are dedicated and engaged, but their initiatives that they're taking have to be for their citizens first and not for anything else or any other motivation that they have outside. And that's why we're putting together this policy, highlighting the taking official actions piece.
It does seem like somebody could be a lawyer, and people could be paying them any amount of money, and without knowing about that contract, there could be a conflict there. I mean, this seems like this, this could give us additional transparency on that. That's part of your thinking here.
Absolutely, it is.
But, but you do have concerns. You feel like lawyers just wouldn't be able to, to be lawyers.
Well, conflicts absolutely need to be disclosed, but you might have a whole bunch of other clients that have no business before the city, but their names would also have to be disclosed under this. So that makes it really difficult for anyone who happens to also be an attorney to be able to take this job. Their firm may not be comfortable with them, you know, also serving their community. There are a lot of people who want to dedicate themselves to service and serve their community and be an attorney, and there's nothing nefarious about that. Or they might be an accountant. We could use accountants down at the Board. And we are essentially depriving our, our residents of having that expertise on the Board by making it particularly difficult for those folks to serve.
Let's go to the phone lines here. We have a lot of people with a lot of thoughts on this. I love that about St. Louis. Scott is calling from St. Louis. Scott, hi, you're on St. Louis on the air.
How are you doing?
Yeah, thanks for joining us.
Oh, yes. One of your panelists brought up that, you know, expertise in mapping and using software, the GIS software. I would like to remind you all that out of any city in the United States, we probably have more people that are qualified to do mapping and use GIS software due to the National Geospatial Agency here.
Yeah, geospatial is becoming a big deal. So, so you're saying you think Heather Navarro's concern about that, that that's not one that you would share?
No, I believe there are plenty of people in the St. Louis area due to, you know, some of the businesses starting in Cortex around mapping and the Geospatial Intelligence Agency. I'm quite certain there's people in St. Louis, if, you know, more than anywhere else, that are very familiar with using mapping software.
Scott, thank you for that. Appreciate you sharing that thought. Heather, anything you'd want to say to that?
Yeah, I agree. We have tremendous expertise in the community. However, I would love to see something that says, what are the criteria for sitting on this commission? And what resources are going to be available to them, you know? And, and if folks don't like an independent demographer for a variety of reasons, well, you can set criteria for what that independent demographer has to have. There's just nothing in here that says, we're going to make sure there is somebody on this commission who has that expertise. And statistics, mapmaking, I mean, there's going to be a tight turnaround. Yes, there are so many online programs out there that people can use. I mean, I used them this last year. But there's nothing in here that requires that expertise to be here. You know, five of these members, four of these members, or five of these members, or four of these members are selected randomly. Sorry, Ms. Cox can correct me on that one.
Yeah. Can I definitely comment on that? I appreciate Scott's comment because I definitely agree, we have a lot of talent in the city. And it's actually the responsibility of the Oversight Committee to make sure we're setting guidelines and criteria. So that responsibility will be something that's put in place once this policy is in practice.
Let's go back to the phone lines. Richard is calling from St. Louis. Richard, hi, you're on St. Louis on the air.
Thank you for taking the call. My question, I, I listened to the conversation, I read the editorial in the Post-Dispatch opposing the proposition. But, I mean, it, it seems that the disagreements are fairly minor. And if overall, this is a reform package, why not vote for it, pass on it? And if there are some things that need adjustment, that can be done later. I mean, that the redistricting commission, that, that's 10 years away if needed.
So there'd be time to work out the details. Richard, thank you for that perspective. I see Jamie nodding like, yes, I agree with Richard. So I'm going to give Heather a chance. Do you disagree with Richard? What would be the harm in passing this? And then if there are some points of disagreement, working through those?
Well, all we have to do is look at the ward, ward reduction. You know, we passed that in 2012, and here we were in, in 2021 scrambling to implement something that the voters had passed, you know, almost 10 years, 10 years prior. So my fear is, we are just going to do this again. There are a lot of details to work out here, and we could pass this, nobody's going to sit, nobody is going to pick this up and run with it until we get the census data. And we know that there are already problems with this, so why not fix it now? Amending the charter is a big deal. So if this passes, we can't go back and tweak it. And when we get to talking about the competitive elections piece of this, now, there's no legislative body that can go back and tweak this. So I think that we need to get, we have time to get it right. Let's not rush through this. This was put together with the intent of trying to influence the last redistricting process. Well, that's in place. We know we're not going to do anything there. Why do we need to go in and put all of this into the charter, knowing full well that pieces of this are not going to work as intended?
And, and you're saying that because of the fact this is a charter amendment, that if the Board had some tweaks to this, or the public was like, eh, this provision is a real problem, it wouldn't be as simple as a board bill to change it?
There are certain parts of this, right? That once they're in the charter, it's going to be, it's going to be hard to go back and changes. And there's just the, the amount of litigation over this. You know, I just, I want to streamline things so that government works better for people. I don't want to put more hurdles in there. And I think with ward reduction coming up next year, we have 14 alderpersons that need to, you know, move along, and we need to recruit folks who can take on larger wards with more people. We don't have time to dilly-dally. We know what we need to do, and we need to put that in place, not make it harder to govern.
So Richard's idea that maybe there are some just small tweaks that could get people like you on board for this, is this something where if this was off the ballot, that these groups could get together and hash it out? Or do you think we do have kind of a fundamental disagreement here about how government should work in St. Louis?
Yeah, no, I don't think there is a fundamental disagreement. I very much think that we could go back, bring this back to, you know, bring this to the public. There are a whole bunch of people who didn't weigh in on this, including a whole bunch of attorneys, I think, that could look at this and say, yeah, we, you know, this and that. I love, you know, Brennan Center for Justice is a great resource, absolutely, but we have time. Let's get, we owe it to the residents of the city of St. Louis not to make it harder to govern in this city.
So Jamie, Heather's been a little bit in the hot seat because the callers have agreed with you, but I do want to turn this back for your perspective on here. Why go forward with this now versus, as, you know, some people are saying, oh, we could revisit this, get a couple more voices involved, and get everybody on the same page?
Well, I would disagree with the concept that we have time because I think now is the time. We're making a huge fundamental change with our Board of Alderpersons, so why not make sure that we're setting standards so that that Board can perform at the highest capability and to be accountable for people? And then I would also say that it's important for us to recognize the alternative to not passing this next week is to stick with the status quo. And I personally think that we all recognize the status quo is not working. We're hearing from the callers, and I think we're all in agreement with the fundamentals, that we do need to make huge changes in terms of accountability and transparency. So why not get this done now when we know we have a measure that's bringing to issue a ton of pieces of light that we haven't had before us before?
So I'm going to squeeze in one more caller here. It's great to see so many citizens just excited about trying to get better government in St. Louis. LaShawna is calling from St. Louis. LaShawna, hi, you're on St. Louis on the air.
Hi, everyone. Basically, I'm just going to say that I, out of transparency, I am on the Board to show me integrity. But more importantly, I'm a member of the LGBT community. And a lot of times, we get left out of the conversation. People don't think about us. We are kind of just that token win to make sure that we make people, you know, get over a certain hump or whatever. But I would say the LGBT community was considered and tied in at the very beginning of this piece of legislation. And that's something that I usually don't see happen as eagerly or as often. So for me to even just kind of come in and listen to the perspectives of people who I know clearly have not been supportive or either use us as a token to say that, you know, this piece of legislation doesn't make sense and this, that, or the other, it's like, we've been asked too, as a community, to wait our turn. Our turn is now. We need to pass this legislation now because we need to actually make a change, and we don't need to wait until other people are comfortable with it.
LaShawna, thank you for sharing that perspective. Jamie, it sounds like you guys sat and, and sat down with people, talked to them in this process, talked to a whole lot of people.
Yeah, we did. We talked to a whole lot of people. We got a lot of community input. All of our meetings were made to the public, and we also had multiple town halls to talk about the pieces of policy that we were putting together. I appreciate LaShawna's call because I think one of the other pieces that we're doing with this policy is removing gendered language from the charter and making sure that we're referring to the Board of Alderpersons as the Board of Alderpersons. So there's lots of little nuanced pieces that are all about making sure that our form of government that we're having, our city leadership, is working with the changes that we're seeing in the city. And that's why it was so important for us to make sure we had everyone's voice as we could get them at the table.
So there's one piece of this I want to make sure that we talk about today. Our time has just flown, which is a testament to our two good guests here today that have shared so much information. But there is a third part of this that we referred to very quickly at the beginning I want to come back to. This would prohibit the Board of Aldermen from changing voter enacted voting methods for municipal offices without first submitting such changes to the voters. Jamie, what does this mean? How would this work?
Yeah, in simple terms, we're prohibiting the Board of Alderpersons from overturning the will of the people. If people pass something, it should not be up to the Board of Alderpersons to turn it over just because they don't like it. If it passed by public vote, it needs to be changed by public vote. That's a simple principle of democracy.
So something like the ward reduction, where we were going to go from 28 to 14, and there were several attempts in the Board of Aldermen to reverse that, that ultimately did not end up working. But this would just nip that in the bud, is the idea?
Yes. Well, this is specific to anything that's related to municipal elections and voting elections. That's how we've written in the policy, in the policy. But it's the same spirit and the same idea, absolutely.
Heather, your thoughts on this one?
Yeah, again, I agree with the spirit of it, but we already know when we passed Prop D, approval voting, we're, and to the earlier caller's point about sometimes we need to go in and tweak this, like, let's get this moving and then go in and tweak it. This would say, we can't, we can't tweak it. And so we've already seen with approval voting, you could win over 50% of the vote in a nonpartisan primary, you still have to run against that same person again in a second election, which costs money, which confuses voters.